So it's being recorded via Zoom. Our introduction of our planning board members, Madison Pickford Chair, Christina Brodor, Patrick Coin, David Demers, and David Berson. Our statement of authority, the Planning Board established under Chapter forty A of General Laws of Massachusetts and Acts in Compliance with Chapter forty A under the zoning bylaws of the Town of Hampden. Chapter forty-one, governing the submission and approval of plots of proposed subdivisions and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Hampden, Massachusetts. Our legal notice, the Hampden Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. In the townhouse, six twenty-five Main Street, Hampden, Mass., on the application of Sherry Himmelstein for a special permit under Section seven point two point four of the zoning bylaws for a substandard frontage lot within the R six district parcel ID zero eight zero two zero 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 one located on South Road. Owned by Sherry Himmelstein and Kenneth Bernstein. Information related to this application is on file in the town clerk's office and is available for public review by the public during normal business hours for the Board Madison Pickford Chair of the Hampden Planning Board, published in the Wilbraham Hampden Times, August seventh and August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Our reports received from other town departments and agencies, the town clerk reported there are no outstanding taxes to date. The Board of Health reported no objection to issuance of special permit at this time. Future development of the parcel will be subject to full compliance with all applicable public health regulations. Title five, three ten C M R fifteen point zero zero zero, while construction standards, three ten C M R twenty-two point zero zero. If applicable, local Board of Health regulations in effect at time of application. The police chief Scott Tremblay reports he has no concerns. Conservation Commission reports that the potential buyer must meet with the Conservation Commission before any work begins. So you're back?
Yes.
Yeah. Alright, so this is a lot. That's a little odd shape, right?
Same parcel that we were in last few last meetings. Modification to the parcel lines and still have the not a building permanent until further action. Language on the plan. The previous plan, as it was reconfigured, created new lot F. It's new lot F that we're here to try to have the not a building lot removed. And get the Board's approval to, let's say, building lot with insufficient frontage of her seventy-four. Parcel is pretty much been designated like this for a dozen years. Just now see the ability to
This becomes an estate lot?
Yes.
Yes.
Sixty foot strip, which is about two hundred and fifteen feet. Yeah, but then it opens up. Majority of the parcel is under conservation restriction. I do show the hundred-foot setback lines from the property lines to define the building envelope. Terminating at the conservation restriction areas to the east and west. The perks are shown down in the southwest corner of the building area.
So the house would go, if you're gonna sell it, would be within that middle strip?
Yes, somewhere within that strip.
Okay.
So you have to get, you got sixty feet frontage and eight acres, right?
We have like eighty.
Yeah, so I just, that was my question, but even even if part of the eight is conservation, that's still sufficient?
Well, not, I mean.
Because the building envelope itself is an eight, right?
Yeah, the the building, the unrestricted area is eight acres. But actually, if you put stuff in conservation restrictions, then you can't use it towards creating any kind of.
Got it. So you do have a.
Yes, we held aside.
Okay.
So just so I'm clear. The this portion here, you know, within that building envelope, ignoring the hundred-foot setback. Between those two lines is the area that's not covered by the conservation.
Yes, and the whole drive in, the whole sixty feet.
And and how big is that total area? Just that?
It's a little over eight.
A little, that area is over eight acres. Okay, that's.
It's going here. That's why they show the setbacks right here. And that's access to it. So CR, the parcel CRB one, is that is that part of what would be sold? Or is that?
It's it's part of the parcel.
That's part of the new.
New lot F, but it's was a previously designated portion of a different parcel and it's subject to conservation restriction.
Okay.
And it's connected to the back area by a little twenty-foot strip adjacent to the southern property.
Oh, I see that. Okay.
And there's there's no intent to further subdivide out that eight acres, correct? It's gonna stay part of lot S?
Yeah, there will be.
No, that's.
Subdividing, yes.
Perfect.
Yes, Steve.
Is the conservation restriction, Sherry, is that is that in perpetuity? Is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's attached to deed, it's in perpetuity. It will take an act of the Massachusetts State Legislature to undo it and have to be sufficient grounds to do it.
You have no questions?
I have no further question.
This is not a continuance.
Yeah.
This is a new public.
Oh. I move that we approve the application for special permit to the applicant Sherry Himmelstein at ourself parcel.
Just just as one word, I think we have to open it up.
Oh, sorry. Oh. Sorry, I didn't see your arm. You have a question? Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see your arm raised.
I'm calling for a search and look and help first. Go with the driveway for this leaf that was a big raised between the plank, the grainage.
So the driveway would be within the, or if you want to answer, we can probably answer right in the eye.
Driveway would within the sixty-foot access strip going in. And prior to obtaining a building permit, sure driveway design will be developed. And as far as drainage goes, the site itself is about approximately about a ten percent slope from the south to the north. The driveway area going in is a little bit rolly, but it's not any significant slopes at all.
If you'd like to come look at the plan, I don't know if you have a copy that you're looking at, you're welcome to.
How far away from the sun tree by driveway?
Twenty-five.
Ten feet.
Ten.
Stormwater permit.
Yeah, so there would be a stormwater permit that they'd have to pull before they did the driveway, so that would all be designed and reviewed.
Okay, so the potential buyer has to give us some one permit from one of the projects.
Building.
What's gonna happen with the so long the trees is that takes up some of the sixty yeah, frontage.
Did you already remove some of the stone, the?
Just at the front.
For the sixty feet?
Just for the.
Yeah, I thought I thought it.
Have the whole sixty feet just in.
Some of the.
Right now, it's just a narrow walkway.
Okay.
That's all that's been removed so that people can enter the property from the street.
Right. So she asked me about that stone wall right there. I think so. This one, do you know what you're doing with the stone wall?
Well, I'm not doing anything with it.
So you're leaving it until the potential buyer?
Yeah, that'd be up to the buyer, what happens with the stone wall?
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that anybody would wanna keep the stone wall. I don't know that anybody would wanna remove it.
Right.
I can't see much point in it, plus it keeps it away from the all the properties.
Letting property.
I guess the question is, can you remove the stone wall? Is there nothing to get a driveway and keep the stone wall? And I don't know what the setback has to do with the property.
The stone wall running east-west along the property line? That I'm sure that would not be disturbed. Up until the point where the driveway passes the the conservation restriction parcel. They're not gonna be able to put the driveway through there. So once you get past that, you decide to regret with and leave some of the wall, sure.
Well, will the driveway after the wall the way along, leaves the same as the wall? And does he end the stone wall and then come into the area where we can load on?
As soon as they get past the conservation restriction parcel, they can figure out their best way to access where they plan to build. This is all. Barbie? Sure.
And that's that's loud?
Stone wall is not property line and say interior wall. I'm sure the don't know of any reason that it couldn't be removed in portion.
And the distance of the driveway has to be from our property line is how many feet?
Where is she abouting?
We are minimum of ten feet from the property.
Is she? Oh, yeah, fourth, okay.
Do you have any other questions?
How about the utility, is it going to be underground?
That's not part of our review. That would be part of when they apply for their building permit and go through that effort.
You may do the whole side and ridge line and the script.
When the development happens, then that's when that will go into effect.
Eventually, it does.
If it falls at that time, yeah.
I don't know if it does or not. We don't check that building.
Six hundred feet or more on the level, according to the county I S. It's on the, there are about six hundred feet now, we should sell.
When they pull the building permit, he will tell them the applicant or the potential buyer what they have to go through. And ridge line, if ridge line applies, he'll tell them they have to pull that permit. It's through the planning board, he'll tell them.
Okay, what were the requirements for the special permit?
Section seven point two point four.
Oh.
Yeah, seven two four, which is on page sixty-eight of our zoning bylaws.
This is submitted, it's such a, okay, they have requirements.
Seven point two point four.
Yeah.
Yes.
And does they have to comply with any performance standards?
Like what?
It says in section seven point seven where applicable.
Which which section under seven point seven? Being a commercial.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Not gonna be being re-glassed on the building lot. That's all that that area is for. When it comes time for someone to buy it and develop it, then ask them the other questions should should be asked, man.
Some of these we just can't answer because we don't know until they apply. Whoever buys it applies for a building permit.
The only thing that applies. It's under drainage.
Yeah. But in terms of what we're here for, it's just seven point two point four. That's all that applies here at the moment.
And then, so then they have to deal with the state for that? In conservation?
Conservation.
Conservation.
Okay. That's also, I thought you had to live in the state, has to be a huge state.
You'd go through conservation and they'll tell you.
That's right. That's conservation, that planning board. Once they apply with conservation, they're they're issued a D E P Department Environmental Protection File Number. And that's all included as part of the Conservation Commission Review.
It's not necessarily anything that goes.
Don't they have to do a determination first?
Correct. And so once again, it's it'll be once they actually have a proposed building.
So the fact that the property owner has other frontage next door, what's gonna happen with that? Is that a building lot?
No.
No, not anymore.
Can that become a building lot under special permit?
No, it's conservation.
It doesn't have a required, it doesn't have the required acreage. It has frontage, but not the acreage. What?
They, the other frontage, should say frontage beyond this sixteen foot frontage.
Yeah.
That cannot become a building lot ever.
We can't make, well, we we can't.
Can't say ever.
Say ever because it's some future, it's possible the town modifies their dimensional regulations, so town changes their dimensional regulations and those regulations would apply at that time.
Back and get a, try and get a special permit.
No. No, the only way they could is if they have enough acreage, if the zoning bylaws change, or if they acquire additional acreage from a butter. Right. If they get the acreage and they have the frontage, then it can become a buildable lot. Right now, it's not a buildable lot.
Any other, any other questions?
Like I'm trying to close the public hearing? No, not yet. Oh, no.
We gotta endorse it.
Oh, okay.
I move that we approve the application for special permit submitted by Sherry Himmelstein for parcel ID zero eight dash zero two zero dash zero zero one located on South Road. Dated with the plans dated July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
And revised.
Oh, sorry.
There's a revision date. Is it right here? There's a revision date, I thought.
Bottom right corner, July thirtieth.
Thought there was, okay, okay. Different plan, forget it. It's the next, it's the next plan.
All in favor? Or did anybody second?
Second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
I have fourteen days to type the decision. I'll mail you a copy, telling you when it's filed. The original from the town clerk service. All right. Ah, yes.
You got it. Holding a roadmap.
Thank you.
All right. But I'll open our regular board meeting at sixteen P M. Our first order of business is an A N R for North Road Minichog Land. Welcome back. You were then?
Do you want?
Second, I'll give it to you.
You want to pay for one?
You, I could say, I could hear, we're good with one plan over here.
All right, so what are we looking at here?
Yes, so we know November of twenty-four, the board endorsed the plan, which created lots A, B, and C on North Road. And what we're looking to do today is to modify the line between lots A and B. There will be secondary access for lot A that came in off of North Road and ran around. And the way the original line was, it kinda cut off an existing Woods Road that could have served as a secondary access. So that we will, in order to make the lot, we're practically for sale. So we're gonna slightly modify the property law. So in this case, the lot three divvies from lot B of B dash R two A, and the new lots would be A dash R in B dash R one.
Yeah.
And that would be the whole lots still maintain all the dimensionals.
Okay, so this, okay. Dimensional, I was like, what is this? It's triangle, yeah, that makes sense. And then this is with for the road. Gotcha. For the frontage. Yeah.
So B R is what is going to get, is used to access the hiking trail. I'm trying to remember now, so I'm totally wrong.
Yeah, well, B R one is the.
Make it money to track.
Right.
Sell either.
Yeah.
Cause A is bigger.
Right.
Right.
So A is what you're trying to, you're gonna try to sell.
Be more.
Right, okay.
Great.
See if I could remember.
I thought this.
A becomes A R.
Okay.
This is supposed, this is a new proposed outline. Okay, that's army out. Okay. Yes, I make a sense. Making it.
They did, right?
Yeah.
For clarification, the dotted line is the proposed new lot line?
The dotted line is an existing.
This is what they're they're proposing.
So it has its angle.
If you look in the legend, it notes the property line to be a small gas line.
It'll be two and a half, wait, four and two. Right? Still got it on that.
Not owned by the land trust now, lot A?
Yes.
The town doesn't own that yet, right?
No.
Until this is done, A N R is done, then the town, okay.
Hopefully, close on it.
Okay.
It's been a long.
No, so like keeping.
And this, yeah.
They're just changing the line. Correct. This gets owned by the town. This is where the parking goes, so you can access the hiking trails.
Got it. You want to see the previous one? You showed your.
The dash line is based right now.
Yeah.
Yep.
They're here. She has the old, it's over there.
Do you wanna see the old one, the previous one?
That's okay.
I have it here. I didn't know if they wanted to.
Okay. All right, you good?
Yes. Yep. I knew right away what.
We endorse the A N R submitted by the Minichog Land Trust, land dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty. Oh, sorry. With a revision date of August first, twenty twenty-five.
Second that.
All in favor?
If you have four, you can, I'll give them an extra. I need those. Right. Each department.
So next we thought A N R for parcel twenty-nine nineteen zero zero twenty-nine twenty-two on Glendale Road. That note? Note?
Yep.
Oh, you're back.
The owner's not here, right? It's the owner.
I'm hanging on, it says you're up next. Oh, I remember.
He came in once.
Yeah. Wanted to, he's gonna sell part of it, right? Behind the conservation. Is there a conservation and he was gonna go like find it or something?
We just need.
Yeah, never mind, I'm. Pretty many.
So this.
I think you were here for this.
Yeah.
If not.
All right, remind us. It becomes part.
His family owned a lot of land between Glendale, he's Wade Road.
Yes.
And he had a plan, his father, Junior, had a plan done ten years ago, so was put out a bunch of lots up on Wade Road, the other parcels. One of the parcels that was left over is this southerly parcel that we have now. When lot seven was endorsed, when the plan was endorsed, there was no frontage for lot seven, but there was a note on the plan that it was to be combined with the land to the north. Land to the north was owned by Oliver the Third. Parcel lot seven at the time was owned by Oliver Junior. And Oliver Junior never conveyed the property to Oliver the Third. Oliver Junior passed away. The other remaining heirs all conveyed or proclaimed their interest in lot seven to Oliver Junior. So now Oliver Junior owns lot seven. He owned the funding parcel to the north, parcel twenty-nine nineteen. And he also owned the parcel north of that, twenty-nine eighty. The intention now is to take the parcel, the D I S parcel twenty-nine nineteen and divide it into two conforming lots. Taking the southerly of the two, not shown here on as lot A. Binding that with lot seven, so lot seven now has frontage on Glendale Road. And that will be one new parcel that's showing as seven A. Then lot B will be a conforming parcel on its own. And he'll still have his house lot to the north. It's another one of those cases where something signed off and it's to be. It's another one of those cases where something signed off and it's to be combined with adjacent land. And if it's never invaded, then you're kind of a sticky situation. But this is his way to rectify that.
So is lot B, lot B is connecting with the parcels to the east? Is it the parcel directly to the east and the parcel south of that? So is it?
Lot, lot B itself runs from Glendale Road all the way to the east.
Yeah. And will.
To Stone's property.
Right, okay, and then.
It's a long, narrow strip.
Okay, so that's one parcel and then the parcel directly to the south of that, the other.
Yeah, that's lot A, which will be combined with lots.
Gotcha, okay. Well, that's going that way. That makes sense.
So basically you're taking seven and splitting it up to seven A, A and B.
Yeah, exactly. Originally, I thought it was just.
Yeah.
This and that.
We're just calling it.
All of these. Where this so can get in here.
Yeah.
Sorry, the stone wall was throwing me off as to where the lot lines were.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a little deceiving. Okay.
Any other question?
Yep. To approve the proposed A and R plan?
Second.
Hi.
Is Mr. Noe going to come in, pick this up on my RF or?
Um, I saw that.
I made sure it's on. It takes.
Thank you again. Next thing today.
You all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Um. Mark Road, Chog Land Trust, site plan review.
Yeah. Come back. You love it again.
Your act.
We can't, it's just gonna have to be visible. Can they, they see it on it?
If you turn it towards the TV, but then we can't see it.
Sherry, maybe you move over and we can put it where Sherry will sit in.
Turn it that way a little bit. Or there, the camera's up.
Hold on a second. Do you have extras to show the board members? No, I, did I give you smaller size, the PDF?
Oh, yeah, no.
Can you read those?
Yeah, I can read this. Um, I would, I just want to make one disclosure before we start, just full disclosure. As some of the board members know, I'm also a land use and zoning attorney. I have worked with Sherman and Frederick in the past. I've never worked with you specifically, but as a disclosure, I did want to put that out there. I don't think it would have any bearing in my ability to make an impartial decision tonight. However, it's out there.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Josh Koro. I work as a professional civil engineer with Sherman and Frederick at Palmer. We're representing the Minnetonka Land Trust and very good to be again tonight. This is the parcel that Dan was just reviewing, the.
Dash one.
Being that.
Yeah, that's fine, then this.
So as you guys may know, it's just south of recently old five, where there's a house here on North Road, just probably just south of that. And the newly created lot for any trailhead for funding. And we are proposing an eight space gravel parking lot. We chose the entrance to kind of minimize a couple of different things, minimize grading, rock wall removal and tree removal. Because as you guys know, it's steep right along that edge. There's a drainage ditch on the outside of the road as well, on the west side of the road here. So our goal is to minimize tree clearing. I think we counted what, five trees? Yeah, so four trees that would have to be removed. We're trying to maintain as many of the others as we can. And as you know, it's just over two acres, the whole parcel's just over two acres. And you know, we're looking to get some of the cars off the road for the trailhead, for the trail system further up to the west. So what we created was, you know, four percent, three percent pitch across gravel driveway with snow water management. We have, we're proposing a perimeter gravel, kind of like an interceptor trench, just to kind of slow it down, infiltrate what we can. We're also proposing to rain gardens, if you will, minimize what would overflow and then get into the street. We try to keep this as compact as possible. We presented Sherry and Jennifer with the land trust a couple of different options, and we felt this was the best to, for, for access. Site distance as well as to, 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 um, to minimize impact to the, to the nature out there. Where we're going is pretty much in the field. You can see these green kind of mopped lines. That's where there's trees currently. And then this is our benchmark over here. So we're able to save as much as we can. We did send out early, we did send out to the different departments. I think they saw our plans early on.
Yes, thirty days before they got them.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And we did receive comment that we need a paved apron. So we are proposing eighteen foot wide access. You know, we didn't want to make it too big for stormwater and for folks getting in there. We figured eighteen feet wide is good. We're going to pave twenty feet back. We're going to provide a paved water bar that kind of funnels the water. So it gets it off as quickly as possible, plus, plus there's no plumbing. So most of this water, if not all of it, will get into one of the two rain gardens. Just be a tiny little bit of the apron that would go into the existing roads, ditch system. So high level, I think that's kind of the overall goal. Our proposed limit of disturbance out of the two acres. The total limit of disturbance we're envisioning is about seventy two hundred square feet. The actual gravel parking area itself is twenty six hundred square feet. And we are opposing, you know, proper road control measures at the limits down at the, more or less the design point where she flow would flow. Was there anything else? That kind of comes up.
How many vehicles do you think will be able to park here?
We're proposing.
Typically, we never have more than a couple at any of our locations. This one probably is the least.
Popular. If you do this, you might get a few more, right?
Yes, yes. I mean, several complaints of them parking on the road, but also access. It just wasn't, I mean, and also visibility. We couldn't really see. People saw it on their all trails map, but they couldn't find it. So now we can have a nice kiosk here, couldn't see it.
She said twenty feet wide, is that enough? Two cars.
Yeah. Oh. Is it, so is it the intent that one car pulls in? Can two cars pass each other on the driveway?
They good.
Is it eighteen or fourteen? Cause I'm seeing.
I think he said it's twenty feet.
He said it's twenty.
Eighteen feet wide.
Yep.
Twenty feet back for that.
So the eighteen wide. So this is showing. But that's from. That's not necessarily a pay there. So.
You're rarely going to have two people.
Yeah.
I'll write on my.
But they can.
Be around myself. From here to here is eighteen. Okay, so this is.
That reflect parking spaces.
Here.
They stacked.
And eighteen feet across. I'm just talking about, so it's the hashed mark. Which interior hash with this is.
And what we did is we expanded.
Doesn't extend all the way, the eighteen feet. So I was just wondering if that. But they just, they were told that's just, I think that's just the anti-track. I don't think that's, I think that's literally just during construction. Yeah, they were told.
It'd be gravel service.
Twenty snap.
Since we're just going to have.
Maybe six, I think this is.
Yeah.
So.
Two way here, this is more space to cover the bottom here.
Space for that two things.
Be around there. I'm sure. I'm gonna go look.
Yeah, 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 go grab. Sorry, I didn't bring bigger. Set up picture sheets for everything else. What is this, the actual? Oh, this is, that's anti-track. Yeah, I apologize about that. So that's for our stormwater control. So that's right here. That's as you're building. This is more like a big stone, like you're wrapped, you know?
Gotcha.
So then it, as you move. Drag a bunch of them.
Gotcha. I understand that.
Really any standards for this. And it's just not specifically good. Also, it's like ground flood.
A restructurist. And other than that, I think other than that twenty foot apron, it's all permeable.
Yeah.
Yeah, gravel parking. Who'd they think it is? I don't think so.
Pitch on this road.
That was a performance and we felt it was below the threshold. It wasn't specifically exempted. But when we looked at it, it's under all the other.
It is.
Like, don't be the other.
It is low it.
Well below, for the actual disturbed area, we're well below.
Right, just considering how small it is.
And disturb.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we still did include drainage measures. Comfortably handled, you know, ten years.
Yeah.
It'd be impractical threat at size of detention. Something so free.
Also impractical to go hiking during a hundred year flood event. So. Well, some people.
Don't think people would be worried.
Are you, so the two, those gardens, you said? The water. No, rain garden. Are you going to have like a park under the road to connect them or they're just going to be separate?
No, we weren't planning on cross connecting them.
Okay.
Essentially, they're going to fill up. This watershed kind of stretches out a bit here, and this one gets like the balance of it. So essentially they function as like two little cells. They're going to infiltrate, fill up, and then broadcast weird overflow and then into the ditch system.
Okay, so not until the road.
No, no.
Okay.
This is, this is still going to have, you know, a little dip down, go up, then a water burn, then the drive.
Okay.
So that way, as the water comes down, it's not just shooting into the street. I mean, some will in big events, but most of it will be captured and put into one of, one of the two rain guards. And then it's just going to be regular ditch fall continued.
Okay. Will you have some signage there, Sherry?
Yes. Sorry, nation's ready. Sorry, approved way, way back when.
Yeah.
From CPA five hundred dollars for a kiosk. And actually, I think they're working with an Eagle Spout project to build the kiosk. I don't know if I saw any commitment on. To do that as their goal project or whatever.
Okay.
Great.
Questions?
Yes.
The opening to this is coming in from your, my friend. How far back does it go into property?
From, from the edge of road, up part back?
Yes.
To the back edge of the parking?
Yeah. Can you just tell me who you are and your? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Melissa Masternardi and my dad.
Yep.
Michael Masternardi, the owner of portion of Mount Vision.
Sixty five feet back.
And how close is that to the butters?
The, the center, center line of the driveway, closest to the butters?
Will be end, where the end of the parking lot is, how close is that?
To the other, to the north or to the?
Away from. Going up the mountain.
Yeah, sixty five feet.
Word.
I think they're on the other side.
Oh.
No, you're not, you're, you're saying going north along the road, right?
No, she's saying in.
She puts it on the back side of that.
Put it on the other side.
You want to come up to the fourth?
So from the edge of the parking lot, she wants to know how close it is to her property. Mount Brook, you're in Mount Brook?
Yeah, she's on the other side of probably, so the other side of us.
On the other side, so really far away.
Yeah.
Very far.
Very far.
Very far. There was hiking trails kind of getting close to our properties.
Yeah, no, I, as far as we know, there shouldn't be anything on anybody's property. Yeah, we actually, I mean, this has been a very complicated project. I actually did a land exchange, who's the butter?
Right.
And so you got more land, they priced perfect gardens. So we're hopefully very far away. I mean, you know, if you feel that there's any impingement, let us know, but we had it all flagged.
Yeah.
If you share the locust plan.
Yeah.
Worry about the.
Share the locust plan on the other sheet. It might help her.
This way, this right, this point might be more helpful. Yeah.
On V zero zero one, you've got a.
Yeah, this, this shows the whole, you know, the whole lot. Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is our overall system of property plan. So see that little box right there? And then Mount Road. So.
Thank you.
Very far. Yes.
Any other questions?
And we approved the application for site plan review. Submitted by Minnetonka Land Trust. That's it. Again.
Second.
On paper.
Hi.
Thank you. All right. Done. Um, item four had to reschedule. He told me at the last minute today, so. It's going to be rescheduled.
So leave it in the folder.
But.
Sounds, that's who.
Run five.
Yeah, one to five.
Here, I used to still lease, I don't see them. Stack the paper.
All right, A and R for one fifty two Wilberham Road, Bay State, or excuse me, Bay Street LLC.
Oh.
One fifty two. Yeah.
Yeah.
Back here.
Yeah, right.
Did you think you two miles?
Yeah, right, just connected three acre long.
It's a thick mylar.
I'm.
Good stuff.
I wonder if. Thirty three.
Alrighty.
Are you? Good evening. My name is Timothy Coon. I'm a professional engineer. They are, so here tonight representing the owner and athlete. Which is Bay Street LLC. They are seeking approval of A and R plan to merge six existing parcels that they own at the address of one fifty two Wilberham Road into a single parcel. It currently exists as six pieces. Um, there's been a house building on it. They own all parcels. And by doing this, they will merge it into a single lot with a certain house up. Um, they're going to buy. Um, they're gonna buy all requirements of.
Those are easy.
Yeah, I chase.
No, for me, no.
This, yeah.
One, two.
Very interesting. I've been, I've been.
Okay.
It makes more sense. Yeah, it makes a lot of sense to me right now. So it's each individual one. Just like sure. I understand that.
Oh, shit.
Yeah, one of these will go.
Is that the walking trail? Is that?
So what is one thirty-five?
Yeah.
Hmm, but. Like lane locked here?
Well, it looks like.
No, there's not, they've got, there's an access there.
Access.
Yes, those, there's a white, see the white, there's an access driveway already.
Oh.
Yeah, there are.
Ease moves.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, there is.
Right access to, actually two lots.
Yeah, one, one thirty-five, one sixty-two.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, one fifty-six and one sixty-two.
Thirty-five.
Oh, that's just the house numbers.
Oh.
On the, the large one.
I got it.
It's, it's one thirty-five on the, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah. The G I S. Not relevant to this, but it's interesting.
Right.
Interesting shape.
It just cause you can't see the rest of it. Can't see the rest of it.
Yeah.
It's just a portion.
Cause it's kind of, I don't want everything here on. Think, all except. Oh, no, they don't.
Bar six. Make a motion to approve the A and R for Bay Street Ellis. This, you will be him road. Second.
I'll do this.
Hey, Doc.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
All right, um, eight Echo Valley Drives. Home occupation. Are you, hello, are you guys?
I'm Scott Thomas.
Great. All right, so. Selling crafts at craft fairs and maybe online seven point, okay, laser crafts. Um. Back is up to date. Is all your. Work happen at the house? Haves.
Yeah. We, we, we know signage, we know.
No customers. Okay. Just answered like three questions.
What kind of crafts would you be making, sir?
Uh, we can laser kind of etching on the boards and make some sort of mints and.
Oh, nice.
Like cricket, and those sorts of things.
Yeah, it's similar to a cricket, but it's way more advanced than it can, you know, cut through like a quarter inch wood.
Wow.
A lot of engraving and. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, sounds like it.
It's well.
Not like four, like five.
Yeah, spare time, that's why it's a spare time.
Yeah.
Craft. Um, okay, spare time. So no delivery trucks are scheduled. No, but ever, all the materials are stored in your house. No signage. No equipment outside. Maintenance done. Any other questions?
You're the primary crafter.
Oh, I thought it was you. Okay.
Wooden craft.
Didn't, was that, was the mug engraved by, by you guys, that one right there or?
No.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Inspiration. Right. Move that we approved the application for home occupation at eight Echo Valley Drive for Scott and, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Anthony Thomas.
A second.
On paper.
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
About the craft fairs on the high school.
A few years.
Oh, good.
I'm gonna go online. I'm an online person.
All right, Mount Vision.
Four.
Mine down.
Seven, I think, this is, yeah, seven.
Yes.
That would be always. I'm Melissa Masternardy. This is my dad, Michael Masternardy. He owns Mount Vision.
And I have two plans here. One, I read street sign, it shows a lot, trying to sell right now. The buyers are, I had a G I S showing our, that the road, the gravel road is going through the lot. I have a plan. Is it medical to this, except that it shows where the gravel road is. It's not on the property, except way down the end, which in our deed, we will have a right of way through there.
Okay.
So you're just coming here to tell, let the board know.
On this document with the one. Can see the gravel road.
Yeah.
I don't think that that's something that we would sign, um.
Our attorney told us that that's.
The planning board would sign.
Man, did we, we see the, uh, the mylar?
What, what is the date of that mylar?
I both needed the same, December two thousand eight and December two thousand, exactly the same day. Yeah, so this is the, it only accesses it just a little bit right here. Yeah. And that one shows nothing, right? Right. Yeah, and this one is signed, and it shows that it doesn't touch it at all.
This one just show the roadway.
Yeah.
Right.
Have you had it surveyed recently to get an updated plan?
I. He said this is, the, the mylar is exactly what happened.
Right, but it's from two thousand eight, it's two thousand twenty-five.
There are two pins you can't find. They're supposedly there.
So this will have a road.
The surveyor is gonna be there in about five or six weeks to put a pin in, or maybe two pins in. You can find one, but maybe he might be.
Yeah.
You know? Is there a mylar to go with this plan? But does he know the roadway?
Not that I know.
Do you know?
I am, I mean, I got so many plans.
Um, do you know if it was recorded at any point?
Well, that one was.
This one, I mean.
This one was recorded, but it doesn't have the road.
Right.
Wouldn't have to be. The only thing that is, it shows where the road is. I was up there and you see the telephone pole, electric pole.
Everything else exactly the same, except for this one shows the road and this one doesn't.
Yeah.
But the one without the road is.
One says twelve-ten over eight. That's. And this one says twelve-eighteen of oh eight. So this one was done after.
Yep.
This one.
Mm-hmm.
And the one that's filed with the registry of deeds is the one without the roadway.
Correct. It's the later date. That's about a week later. Yeah, a week later. You wanna see them? Bring them over.
Yes.
Yeah, that was coming to you.
Why isn't he filing a new one? File the new updated.
Different. New mylar, just if this one, you know, does the show the roadway.
Right, yeah, so you can.
All the rest of the deed.
What?
Feels is.
What?
I'm, we talk about the roadway. I mean, what, if I went up there, what is the road? Is it just a path? Is it?
It's a gravel road.
It's a real, it's a real gravel road.
Gravel.
Gravel, right?
Yeah. It's an accessway for all the houses.
There's four houses up on the hill.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Okay.
We have the property around the houses.
Yeah.
They have access to get to their houses through our property.
Which property?
He is complaining that it's on their property, a potential buyer.
Oh, yeah. That, a potential buyer, part of it is showing one of them that.
If you don't, if you don't mind me asking, so which parcels do you own and which parcels are for sale?
In the point of the month?
Yeah, is there any?
With the parcels that are for sale, you could.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just curious. So which, which parcel is, you're, you're back here, right? And then you've got the strip.
Yeah, I've got forty-five acres.
Yep.
That way.
And then who owns? Is one, is this one that's being sold?
Yes.
This lot.
And you see this.
One-on-one, so you, you currently own this property, you're just looking to sell this one.
Yeah, just that one there right now.
Gotcha, gotcha.
If you go on the map, the G I S and the mass G I S, it shows the road on that parcel he's trying to sell.
Yeah, which makes sense. I mean, G I Ss are just notoriously incorrect, so it's, that doesn't surprise.
Am I looking at it?
No, I don't.
What's G I S? What are yours that have one?
Potential.
That's another version of it. And G I S. So. And this is. And, and the other board members may have, may have a different opinion on this.
Sorry, I'm. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay, um, and so. As far as, so this plan is a, is a week earlier than the recorded mylar. I'm not saying, suggesting that this is inaccurate because I'm sure it is accurate. Um, but in order for us to endorse a plan showing the roadway or that gravel road, I think we would need a new mylar, as frustrating as that may be. Um, which would be helpful for you, quite frankly, because if you record a new mylar that's showing the roadway, if you do enter into an easement or you're right of way relative to this, you know. When you're selling this property and you include some sort of right of way, you can point to the, the existing roadway on a recorded plan. There's no question as to, you know, what rights you're, you're deeding away. So it's.
That's fair enough.
Yeah, I mean, I.
That one to the people to whoever does it.
Yeah, they could, they could probably just. Okay.
Yeah, we have new surveyors now.
It's just based on the age of the plan. I, I don't, I don't think that we'd be comfortable, right, endorsing a plan this old, cause it's, you know. Seventeen years old at this point. Um, not to say it wasn't accurate. I don't think, you know, I don't think there was any, you know. Underhanded dealing or anything like that here. It's just.
Yeah. We appreciate that. Yeah, I think that's your best bet.
Best bet, okay.
So at the time.
New set of plans and then come back.
It could literally be, you know, if, if somebody can confirm, you know, an updated version of this same plan, you know, we could endorse it. It's just. And then at least you've got a recorded plan on record that shows where that roadway is.
I don't, I'm not sure that we need to even endorse it. I think that you just go get it surveyed and that's, and that's what you file with the.
Yeah.
Showing where the road is, if you want to. Show where the road is.
Wanted the endorsement if you would sign it because it was originally passed through here.
Yeah, I don't think.
That's what they were at.
Right, so.
So if you said, okay.
Understood.
Right.
These are identical, you know.
But not.
Not.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll say that, we'll endorse it, then we would have to get all new.
If someone from the planning board was still here from two thousand eight and they said, yes, we signed off on that, then it could happen.
Yeah, but you guys are all.
Even then. We're all new.
No, I think we would not do that.
This plan is a week sooner than that one. That one's filed, so it supersedes this, whether it's signed or not.
Right.
Cause that one's dated later, so that plan is the one that will.
Yeah, that.
Any plan prior to it.
Yeah.
So they signed the later plan instead of the earlier plan.
Okay.
It shouldn't, I mean, yeah, it should be relatively simple. And, and like I said, that would make things a lot easier from a conveyancing attorney standpoint, because then you can, in the deed, you can really point directly to that existing gravel roadway.
We're not doing anything.
This is. You know, as fact, it's your rights.
Should let them know that.
I did, yeah, yeah.
They think.
I'm gonna say.
Yeah, so you go get it surveyed, then you won't need to come back to us.
Coming in a, uh, we, five, six weeks, so we'll be all set.
Yeah, you'll let me.
Neighbor.
All right.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
Built this, put your driveway on it, no big deal. But if she ever.
But that's right. It's never an issue. He tries to sell it and then all of a sudden get a problem.
And. What's she calling it? Gentleman's agreement.
Yeah.
All right, have a good night, you go, Erica.
Grably already paved on it.
We're actually gonna close our meeting early, so you can come back next.
I like that.
Now he's my neighbor, all jokes.
You're gonna laugh. Your wife came in and she brought the, did she tell you?
No.
She came and dropped it off and I said, I said, oh, he's doing, he's doing the woodworking and she said, I said, home occupation and she said, I said, it's the woodworking, right? Cause I had the woodworking guy and I had you. She said he is. And I said, well, he's doing a home mock, right? She says, well, I know he's got a saw down there. Then I went. And then she walked away and I went back and I looked at it. Well, no, he's the real estate guy. He's not the woodworking guy.
She called me and told me that. I'm like, really?
Everyone's got a home mock, that's why.
Got a saw down there.
Yeah. Donna Tate, I'm sure, what part do you? Good. Yeah, how about you?
It's getting big.
Yeah, loud. You probably can hear them from your house.
Yeah. Crazy, huh?
Yeah.
Sounds like a fine.
Yeah.
That's great. So I agree. I mean, it's true. I don't get it now.
Yeah. Yeah, they added a bus stop down the street from me. Not, I'm not sure who it is. We'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah, we're, we're excited about that.
John gave my family his old playground.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, nice.
Yeah, I'm very excited. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, a little down.
That's my name, so I'm all excited.
All right, home occupation. What are we doing?
So. Uh.
Woodworking, obviously. Perfect.
I own a couple pieces of property and they're in LLC and I'm just looking to do my paperwork at my house, just a home office.
Okay.
No employees, no shipping, um. Stuff like doing paperwork.
Okay.
No noise.
No noise, yeah.
No saws or hazardous materials.
I don't want none of the honey to do this.
What's.
I have been sympathized.
So what's the nature of the underlying LLCs?
So we're just real estate, we have a couple of properties. We're involved and developed a property and at this point now, we're getting later in years, we'll just manage what we have.
Okay, so is it like commercial or residential real estate?
A two family and we bought some property. Out in the virtues and we developed it years ago. So now we're just, uh. Just managing what we have.
Some place for bookkeeping and administrative work, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Cool.
All right, so, yeah. I don't have any questions.
Move to approve, to make a motion to approve John and Delica one eleven Ames Road for home occupation.
Second.
One favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome. Take care, nice seeing you. Be on the road.
Yeah.
Be safe. It's interesting, all the guys coming with these old plans. And here we go. I feel bad, it's just, you know, it's such a.
We've had at this point.
Applicant, gosh, it feels like it was earlier this year, but I'm pretty sure it was last year, who came in with the plans from like the eighties and was like. And then we were like.
I inherited a few of those at my house, I just, you know, there was, I opened a cabinet, found all yellowed old.
So he was, and he was probably here. Several years ago, four, five, two seals. Oh, God, yeah, it's like part of the properties and overhand parts, handling it was. Just couldn't slightly connect the dots with what we were saying, like you just needed.
All right.
I feel, I feel bad, if only because they're saying the surveyors passed away, that would have just been so easy, you know, even fifteen of them planned. Surveyors to keep, you know, keep records of all the plans they did.
Right.
But would, would a board sign any plans more than three, three, like the cutters, especially with an A and R and.
Did anyone look at the minutes? I didn't, I didn't, I just couldn't think.
I did not, but.
Anything wrong with that?
I did not.
Yeah, we went through like.
Yeah, you can't, we didn't have that money, you're old anyway, so.
Yeah, like Tony says, whatever it is.
Yeah, we, we did.
From January?
I had to sit, but I couldn't.
Yeah. My place.
Don't even remember this meeting, somebody knew?
No, John raised his hand.
Oh, now, now?
Yeah.
Now?
Oh, so he wants top, lower his hand.
Lower your hand.
Nice, nice. Maddie, I just wanted to say a couple things after everyone left, you know, that Mastinati guy. Charlie really had a lot of trouble with him.
John, we're still, uh.
I know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna like, you know, just give you a little background.
I'm just reminding you.
Yep, and a lot of things were. You know, we felt bad and this was back when I was on the board as well, for the people who live up there. And. You know, they're on a dirt road that this guy owns. And Charlie's point, after he took over his chair, was like, the next time he comes before the board looking for something, it should be a two-way street. How are you gonna take care of those four houses up there? If we're gonna make lots for you with access, then in some way can we make whatever, Mount Vision Road, a common driveway, so at least they get some rights from the town.
Yeah.
They're paying taxes. Uh, they have to walk the kids down to Mountain Road to get them on the bus. It's just. Some way, there needs to be a little bilateral communicate, uh, you know, back and forth with the guy.
Okay.
And that was the point, I think you'll find some minutes from, from oh-eight, from oh-four, from ninety-eight, when this guy was coming before us, it's a long history.
Yeah, I'll go read those in my spare time, yeah.
Really?
I don't have spare.
I will, where do I find them?
All on my computer, I'm happy to email them to you. I've got, I've got minute, I've got minutes going back to eighty-nine.
Demers DJ seven-seven at Gmail.
All right, I'll put them in Spanish though.
I'll translate it, don't worry.
Things possible.
Lots up there, you can't service more than three.
We can do Latin too, once you transfer it into Latin.
Nice, you must have more time in pool, no, no league tonight?
Uh, actually, I do have league, I'd rather be here.
You're doing that well.
One lot. I'm actually one and one, I'm undefeated.
Frosty, John, is that a frosty? The first one and last one done in this town?
Where?
Is Mount Vision considered a frosty?
What is?
Mount Vision.
Mount Vision, consider.
Mount Vision, Mount Vision.
Is, is.
We're talking back to the sixties.
I know, but is it considered a frosty?
Could it be considered a frosty?
Is it, is it definitely considered a frosty?
Is it currently considered a frosty?
No.
Was it approved as one?
It's, there's no approval. There was no approval for Mount Vision.
So he just built all those houses on one parcel of land?
No, those houses were summer homes way back and we were talking like the thirties and forties. And they got upgraded to full homes.
Right.
How do they get? How?
No, how?
All on one.
Yeah, how is that done without a definitive subdivision plan? Back then, they didn't have that, oh, is this all, this all pre-dated zone?
When John was the chair.
It had to be pre-zoning because.
That's funny, Maddie, thank you, thank you, Maddie. No, I'm not, we're talking, you know, back in the sixties and seventies, they just got.
It's an existing non-conforming condition.
Yeah, basically. So. Is there a way we can take care of the people up there? You know, they have, if you've ever driven up there, I don't know if you ever have, it's the worst road.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, Mountain Road is bad, I'm trying to think about like from a, from like a procedural practical standpoint. Like how do you, how do you retroactively do anything with that? I don't think we can.
Well, the point, Charlie's point was that if the guy is looking for something to create new lots, well, where's the access for your lots? Oh, it's off this dirt road that's on my property, well. You need to upgrade that dirt road.
But it's not, it's not a new lot though, cause they're, they're already existing.
Right, but one behind, he was looking to give one to his daughter at one time. That was.
Oh, you're giving it back to her, cause Brandon Moore moved out, he moved to West Virginia, and I believe that's the one he's giving to his daughter.
Okay.
I think that was, and that dirt road, I went up that in my Mini Cooper, I made it halfway up and I rolled back down to the bottom, I said, I'm never going up this road again.
Right.
Okay, now, is it that way?
Mountain Road.
When it splits, you go left.
Oh.
Then it goes like this and this driveway is literally straight up.
Exactly.
It's, you can't get a fire truck up there if you tried.
Exactly.
No, I went that way.
Homes up there with kids.
Yes, with kids.
High school. In high school. You made the common driveway, you're not gonna be able to be serviced any fresh out of the.
That needs to be recreated, that whole driveway.
Right, you know, you're right, Dave, the park coming from Mountain Road is the worst.
Yes.
And then the rest of it is just grading after that. But. You know, that, that, uh, it's well above, what is it, eight percent, well above the eight percent.
Oh, yeah, there's no fire truck getting up that driveway.
Right, and keep in mind, they'd have to turn, so they're starting at zero in the growler gear right there. Right.
And then there's a, there's a, so the driveway goes up real steep and then it comes down through the woods, which is even worse.
It does loop, it is a, a loop.
I don't think I made it that far. I was like.
I have my mini.
Turning around.
We'll make it.
I'll drive you on the road.
I'll call Mark Langone, he'll take you up in the town truck, there you go.
No, I got a Jeep, I'll use the Jeep.
I have. Actually, I have the truck tonight.
You can go up in the truck.
All right, I gotta go.
We gotta go. Can I do the minutes real quick? Can I prove? Thank you.
Thanks, John.
I'd like to make a motion to prove the regular meeting minutes from July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
How do you like the new time?
All in favor?
Everyone does.
I.
Second, I'm sorry, Pat, and it's only.
Dave and Dave show.
Three, four, right?
Dave and Dave show, uh, yeah, four. I can count.
I can't, I'm tired now.
The bus is only ten minutes late, you know, like last year.
Ten minutes, you hope.